I will now call the City of Bloomington Common Council Special Session to session in to order. This is Wednesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. During our agenda summation, we have legislation this evening for second readings and resolutions. First on our agenda is appropriation ordinance twenty one oh two and ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing twenty twenty two civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. Next will be appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three and ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty two. Next will be appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four appropriation and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for twenty twenty two. Next is ordinance twenty one dash thirty nine and ordinance to amend ordinance twenty dash twenty two, which fixed salaries for officers of the police and fire departments for the year twenty twenty one regarding pay grade changes for police lieutenants and captains, additional pay and retention pay. Then we'll move on to ordinance twenty one dash thirty six and ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty two. Then we'll move on to ordinance twenty one dash thirty seven and ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year twenty twenty two. And I believe lastly is ordinance twenty one dash thirty eight, fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year twenty twenty two. We will then deal with matters having to do with council's schedule. And then we will adjourn. Counts, before we get, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to revise the agenda to put items two and three before item one. That would be the appropriation ordinance twenty one oh three for city Bloomington utilities and appropriation ordinance twenty one oh four for Bloomington Transportation Corporation to move those before the civil city budget ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second that we alter today's agenda so that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three and appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four comes before appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Can you repeat it? Am I frozen or is that Councilmember Rallo?
I think it's Councilmember Rallo.
No.
There he is. Yeah, he's he says. Thought I heard him say yes. And we'll have to deal with that.
I said no.
He said no. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Okay, that motion passes eight to one. Councilmember Flaherty, I do believe we have legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance twenty one oh three and ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvement for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year twenty twenty two. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approved by the utility services service budget in August of twenty twenty one sets the water and wastewater budgets for twenty twenty two.
Thank you very much. And we have staff, city representative here this evening. I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty, yes.
Yes, first I'd like to move that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. Thank you. And before Mr. Kelson gets started and Councilmember Flaherty and maybe Mr. Lucas, I may need your help with this. It was my understanding that the mayor wanted to make a brief statement at the beginning of this meeting, so is it possible to just allow that? And I'm sorry, it wasn't on my agenda. Let's face it.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to go after these first two ordinances that you've moved if that's fine with you.
Okay, that's fine with me. Thank you very, very much. Okay, Mr. Kelson, you're the representative for app or twenty one oh three. Please proceed, sir.
Good evening, everyone. For record, I'm Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities for the City. Happy to be here again tonight, and I certainly appreciate the council's consideration of our budget for twenty twenty two and certainly for being moved up on the agenda. That was very kind of me. I don't have any particular news regarding the budget. We really haven't made any proposals for changes. This is the same budget that we brought back in August. But since I have just a moment, I would like to share with you, you may have seen that we have filed for a settlement with all of the interested parties regarding the water rate case. We have filed a joint settlement with the Indiana Utilities Regulatory Commission. We will have a hearing a week from Friday in Indianapolis for that settlement. And assuming everything goes well, we would expect a ruling from the from the commission sometime in the next probably couple of months, certainly. So we are targeting January first for implementing the new tariff, assuming everything goes well from now on. So fingers crossed. But overall, our revenue increase will be about eighteen point two six percent over two cycles. They're about equal in size for residential customers. Their increase will actually be a little bit lower than that because the cost of service approach that we've taken, the agreement closes about half of the gap between the other half of the subsidy that the residential customers have been have been passing out to the other category. So we've made a lot of progress and we're really excited to be finally at this point in the process. So I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kelson. We'll now go to council for any questions on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three having to do with water wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Kelson, thank you for that update. What I'd like to ask, it's just my understanding that the settlement that you referred to ended up being lower from a rate standpoint than what was originally proposed. Can you clarify that or discuss that just a bit and how much lower for an example?
Well, it was, we were asking originally for twenty two point two two percent revenue increase. We got eighteen and a quarter. Two things about that. One is that by settling the case, we're going to be getting the we're going to be getting the new rate at least a couple of months sooner than we would have, so that'll make up for some of the some of the difference. We never, it's very, very rare that you get exactly what you ask for when you enter into one of these processes. And some of the adjustments that were made were related to the actual savings from our solar panels and some of the other, some of the other issues that were included in our in our original cost analysis. We agreed with all of the adjustments that the that the Office of Utility Consumer Counselor and the other parties proposed. The other thing that that happens is we changed the amount of of the capital expenditures that would be coming from pay as you go cash coming into the utility and the amount that we would be taking from bonds. So we're going to be paying a little bit more in debt service, a little bit more in debt service. But by paying a little bit more in debt service and getting larger bonds at the beginning, we actually delay some of the some of the some of the costs. So the revenue requirements to do that are smaller than the revenue requirements were have been if we were doing it all through cash.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelson. Thank you for doing that. But I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, there was one more thing I didn't say, and that is that our budget proposal does not reflect any additional dollars from the rate case. So what the effect of the rate case would be on on us, assuming that the the tariff goes into effect on January first, the difference for us will be to replenish the extensions and replacements budget. So that will help us fully fund our capital plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as I was saying, thank you very much for clarifying the update for my colleagues who are on the council and for the public. Okay, seeing no other questions from council. We will now go to the public for any public comment on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three. We will ask that if you care to speak publicly, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. You can get there by either using the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're on a mobile device or a mobile phone, you can just by using star nine. And should any of those not be available, you can send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom to indicate that you care to speak. I will further add that I would ask all public members to please identify yourself and you will have three minutes for public comment this evening. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
See no hands raised at the moment.
Okay, give it just another second or two. Okay, seeing no indications of public comment, we'll return to council for final comments and or questions. I'm sorry, the the other way, questions and or final comments on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three. Okay, seeing none. Then are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on appropriations ordinance twenty one dash oh three?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? Come back to you, Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And do we have Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh three passes nine zero. Thank you very much. I do believe, thank you, Mr. Kelson. We appreciate it. I believe we have more legislation for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I'd like to move that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that appropriate appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Rallo? Thank you. Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes for appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four to be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance twenty one oh four appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for twenty twenty two. And I believe there is not a synopsis for this ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much. Just to be clarified with the clerk is, should you mention committees due pass recommendation or is that something that I do?
I
Is it even necessary?
Usually I do, so my apologies. Your due pass recommendation for appropriation ordinance twenty one oh four is nine zero zero. And just to be clear, your due pass recommendation for appropriation twenty one oh three, although you've already voted on it, was also nine zero zero.
Thank you very, very much. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I move that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four be adopted. I do believe we have, is Mr. Connell? Here this evening? Good evening, Mr. Connell. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you for your consideration of the twenty twenty two budget for Bloomington Transit. There have been no changes since the original presentation of the budget.
Okay, thank you very much. I like succinctness. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to council for any questions from my council colleagues. I'm sorry, this is on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four appropriation tax rates for Bloomington Transit Corporation for twenty twenty two. Okay, seeing none. We will now go to the public for any public comments on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four. Again, if you intend to speak, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, and you can get there with the participants button or the reactions button or the more buttons. If you're on a mobile device or phone, star nine should get you here. Or if all that fails, you can send a note to meeting host via chat function on Zoom. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Give it just a moment.
Okay.
Not seen any hands raised at the moment. I do have a comment from Sam Dove over chat, who says the bus needs to run on holidays and on Sundays. And I don't see any additional comments beyond that.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Dove. Okay, we'll now return to council if they have any questions or any final comments on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for twenty twenty two. Okay, seeing none. Are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
And thank you all for your vote. Appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh four passes nine zero. And before we move to introduce the next appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh two, we will now invite Mayor John Hamilton to say a few words before we proceed. Good evening, Mayor Hamilton.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. I want to thank the council for more than six months of direct engagement about this twenty twenty two budget, beginning in early April and through spring, summer, and fall, through dozens of meetings and conversations. And just quickly tonight, want to note, we have, in this administration, listened to a great deal of input from all nine council members, as well as a wide range of public voices and institutions interested in our future as a community. We've welcomed all of that input, and I believe the twenty twenty two budget reflects a great deal of it, including major new investments in public safety and in climate-related infrastructure, in some transformative new affordable housing programs and levels of investment and unprecedented support for the arts and critical enhancements to our basic services, pandemic responses, and support for our hundreds of city employees and much more. After all of that input and long discussion, our administration has presented a balanced budget for the twenty twenty two city operations, as we are required to do under Indiana state law. I believe the twenty twenty two budget ordinance in front of you incorporates our deeply shared goals. And also, as required by state law, we've given public notice of the proposed budget amounts, and now it is in your hands to act on that proposed budget ordinance. There are, under state law, three options for the council in considering the budget ordinance. The council can vote to adopt the budget ordinance as presented. Council can vote to reduce one or more categories of spending and then adopt the budget ordinance. Or the council can vote to reject the entire proposed budget. Now, several of you have expressed to me your disappointment that particular aspects of the budget are not as you would prefer them to be. I actually join you in that regard. There are some aspects that way to me. Several of you have indicated that if particular changes that you believe are warranted are not made, that you will not vote for the budget as a whole. Now, I do not doubt that each one of us, if assembling the budget for the city, would make some different choices, whether minor or major. But tonight, there is one budget ordinance upon which to act. And the council's options, again, for the ordinance are to adopt it as is, reduce parts of it, or reject it altogether. I strongly urge the council to pass this budget ordinance. Now, let me know. I look forward to working together in the future toward many of our shared goals, continuing to work on those. One one example is developing new ongoing funding sources for sustainable infrastructure investments. Another is negotiating new labor contracts for police and ASME. Another is investing in stronger community-based, not just government-based, community-based responses to our climate emergency. Our community is doing very well in many respects, dealing with the ongoing health emergency and the pandemic and climbing out of recession. And together, I know we can continue that progress. And I'll, the twenty twenty two budget presents, that ordinance presents a clear and a stark choice. Passing this budget moves us ahead in so many, many ways, on sustainability, on inclusion, on basic services, on public safety. On the other hand, if the council does not pass this budget ordinance, our community and all our city employees will face a much diminished future in twenty twenty two. As you all know, but perhaps not all the public knows, without an adoption of the twenty twenty two budget, under Indiana state law, the twenty twenty one budget continues as is, just repeated in twenty twenty two. And as we shared in a memo yesterday, a failure to pass the twenty twenty two budget would have very dire consequences next year. It would mean, for example, loss of new funding for sixteen and a half positions in public safety and and one position in the office of city clerk. It would mean loss of all the proposed compensation increases that we've discussed together, including the five thousand dollar police retention pay and five hundred dollar pandemic bonus for all employees. Without a twenty twenty two budget ordinance, city employees would get no raises. Some might have to be laid off. We'd lose one point four million dollars from property tax levy. And beyond the dramatic impact on public safety, our parks department, our street department, and our information technology services departments would be particularly hard hit. Plus, of course, eleven million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act and CARES Act money would not be appropriated, jeopardizing many critical programs in housing, climate response, jobs, arts, and more. And those results would be very damaging to our community's future. We've had more than six months of collaboration and discussion, and the resulting twenty twenty two budget is a very good budget. I understand some of you feel it's not an ideal budget. You would prefer certain changes. But the long process has worked and produced, through collaboration and compromise, a very good budget. It is certainly far, far superior to a repeat of the twenty twenty one budget with its dire consequences next year. So as I close, I'll note, as you well know, we're doing all this during an ongoing pandemic and economic recession with a great deal of stress on all our personnel and, of course, our whole community. If a budget does forty nine good and important things for our community, but doesn't do a fiftieth thing that you believe is helpful, do you eliminate the forty nine good things because it didn't do all fifty? I hope and trust you will evaluate and determine that the community overall is far better off with those forty nine good things in the twenty twenty two budget that we have developed together. I'll I'll ask if I can pass this on to Controller, Mr. Underwood, for for very brief comments too, and thank you very much for your time.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Mr. Underwood?
Good evening, Jeff Underwood, City Controller, echoing many of the things that the mayor said. You know, this is a process that's, it really is ten months out of the year, ten months out of twelve months. It's not kind of, for me, it's kind of a combination of two things. We start, it's a puzzle, and you you hope that you have all the pieces. You hope that you can fit it all together and that you can make it all work. And then it's kind of like a a four H project. And then it's kind of like a four-H project, in that you present your finished product, and you put it out there for people to look at and to judge, and look for what you did well and what you didn't do well. And it's something that I personally invest in. Some people say, well, Jeff, you seem to take this process personally. I do, just because we try to present to you the best budget that we can. Does it make everyone happy? No, I can tell you, it doesn't make department happy. Does it make the mayor happy that we funded everything that he would like? No. The council, the public. But what we, you know, what I try to focus on at the end of the day is, the entire budget, does it meet our needs? Can we provide the basic services? Can we compensate our hardworking employees? Is it a balanced budget, and is it sustainable from a public standpoint? And I think we've done that. We've presented a budget that is balanced. I think it meets our needs, many of our wants. And so I would urge you to approve this budget, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hamilton and Mr. Underwood for addressing this legislative body, as well as the public that are in attendance. Mr. Flaherty?
Yes, well, actually, to move the ordinance as well, the appropriation ordinance, so I would go ahead and do that. I move that appropriation ordinance 21-02 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved in second, that appropriation ordinance 21-02 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 21-02, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2022 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. There's no synopsis, and you do pass recommendations 342.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty?
Move the appropriation ordinance 21-02 be adopted.
Second?
Thank you, it's been properly moved in second, that appropriation ordinance 21-03 be adopted. We'll now move to council. I'm sorry. Who do we have as a city representative to speak on this ordinance, if anyone?
I would just say, Jeff Underwood, City Controller, there's been no changes since the ordinance was introduced, and we're here to answer questions asked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. We'll now move to council. Do we have any questions of Mr. Underwood, or I'm assuming Mayor Hamilton, on this appropriation ordinance? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, in our council packet, there is, in addition to the ordinance itself, there are budget Form 1 budget estimates that have each department and each budget category in each department itemized. Is that part of what has already been submitted as our proposed budget to DLGF, or can that be revised?
Those are exhibits that are used to build up to the ordinance that you vote on. So it's a building process. Form 1 is the expenses by department, and then summed up into the total expenditure. Form 2 is the miscellaneous revenues, which in some cases are all the revenues for that particular fund. In some cases, it's everything except property taxes. The Form 3 is the advertisement, which is very similar to what you see in the Form 4, which is the ordinance. And then the Form 4B is that 18-month process that I've talked about in the past, that we're really doing an 18-month budget, not a 12-month budget. So you start with the July 1 cash balance. You say how much revenues for the remainder of the year, how much expenditures for the rest of the year. That creates a beginning cash balance, and then you have your annual one, and that creates the bottom line request, especially in your two main property tax accounts, the Parks General Fund and the City, the General Fund. So there are exhibits that we use, there are forms that we use to create at Form 4 and Form 4B.
So can that, those budget Form 1 budget estimates still be revised? And meet the timeline?
Up until adoption, there can be changes within the fund, if there's more than one department.
Okay, there is, so there can still be change.
That would be up to, yeah, that'd be up to the administration to request that I make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Any other questions from council members? Councilmember Sandberg?
We are well aware here on this council that we don't have the authority to add to this budget. We can only cut. And since many of us certainly do not want to cut the budget, that is the biggest contentious holdup for many of us on this council, and that's the BPD budget. I would be hopeful, and my question has to do with the willingness on behalf of the administration to sit down with us between now and the time this budget could be adopted, and do some negotiation on some reprioritization, given some of the more prevalent matters that we have before us. It would be a matter of shifting priorities for a good many of us. So my question is, rather than give us these stark choices, you either accept this budget, hold your nose and vote for it, even though there are parts of it that you think are actually going to be quite harmful to the city, or you scuttle it and cause all kinds of havoc for the city, which I'm fairly certain or we sit down at the table and we try to negotiate some of these reprioritizations. And as we've just heard, we do have the ability to change this budget between now and the time it has to be submitted under state statute. So again, it's a big question. Are you willing to sit down and continue to negotiate with some of us on making sure that this budget is palatable?
If I take that as a question to me, Councilmember Sandberg, I've certainly been willing to talk to any council member for the last six months about priorities. And we have the ordinance in front of you. I hope you will adopt the ordinance. If there are discussions, I hope you'll adopt it tonight, because we are running up against a pretty tight deadline. We've tried to give plenty of time for those discussions, but my door is always open. As it has been.
I mean, your door is always open with respect to the seven out of nine of us that made it fairly close. Is that still on the table for us to sit down and talk about that? How we streamline that to be more in line with what we think are some critical issues before the Bloomington Police Department?
My door is always open. I certainly, I think the actions that the council took that you're referring to, the seven of you who endorsed a $5,000 pay increase, leadership pay increases. In my view, we've dramatically responded to that. We're actually getting a bigger pay increase than that. I know there are different views about how best to put that in place, but happy, my door is always open. Again, I would encourage you to adopt the ordinance tonight, and there's all kinds of work we can do going forward. I'm a little concerned about getting up to the very last day of the deadline, because if anything were to happen that made it difficult to get that done, we would all be stuck with that 2021 budget. But my door is always open.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. We're still in first round questions, and I do believe Councilmember Volan, I see your hand up, saw it the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor, to follow up on Councilmember Sandberg's question, despite the fact that you say your door is always open, we've heard from Mr. Underwood tonight that there has been no changes to the budget since it was introduced. I do believe that the many different, or rather, the what's called multiple different concerns from members have come before and after the budget was presented. Do you still stand by your argument that your door is open when there's been no visible change since the budget was presented?
Yes, I do. The door is always open, and as you know, the budget is first presented in detail in August in order to give time for plenty of feedback, and it did change since August from when we then formally presented it. And that's the goal of those August detailed presentations. So the door is always open, the budget was changed in response to that. And of course, the budget developed before August due to a lot of feedback that started in April. So absolutely, yep.
And I'll jump in and clarify, my statement is that, yes, what the mayor said is there were changes between the August presentation and ordinance introduction. My comment was specifically to the ordinance introduction. So those changes that I addressed on the first night are included in this version of that budget.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Do we have any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to the public for public comment on appropriation ordinance 21-02, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2022 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. I would ask that if you intend to speak, make a public comment, please use the raised hand function on Zoom. You can get that by hitting the participants button, or the reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're on a mobile device or a mobile phone, you can reach us through star nine. And absence any of those other methods, you can send a note to our meeting host via chat function on Zoom. I will ask that if there's any public comments, please identify yourself before speaking, and we will be allowed three minutes to speak or to make a comment. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, first is Greg Alexander.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. And as you saw, you know, the committee of the whole meetings with the department heads, there are a lot of things the city really could be doing differently, and the mayor's kind of pushed back at making any changes with that. That's really disappointing to witness. Kind of at a procedural impasse here, and I don't know what you should do. I just, I want to reiterate that sidewalks simply still are not being maintained. And I don't know how we're going to meet any of our transportation goals, or climate goals, or even equity goals. Well, that's true. You know, poor people walk, people who have low-carbon footprints walk. It's just, it's so absolutely essential that we maintain the sidewalks that we have, and that we complete the sidewalk network, and we're not doing either of those things really hardly at all. And some department heads tell you, you know, it's going well, it's not. And some department heads say, we're going to have to wait and see. Well, we've been waiting a long, long time for this. And I just want to put that goal ahead of the procedural and political issues that you faced today, because I think we all do want that goal. And one way or the other, it actually needs to happen. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Alexander. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any additional comments, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll give it just a second.
Just a moment. We have a comment over chat. And this is from Juan Moore, who says, it sounds like Mayor Hamilton is leading by a dictatorship and does not care what the city council wants. It's easy to say contract is coming up on the BPD, and we're willing to at least give them a raise compared to other cities. And that is the end of the comments.
Okay, what did you say his name was? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, just want to say thank you, Mr. Moore, for your comment through the chat function. Do we have anything else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to the council for final comments, at least first round, on appropriation ordinance 21-02. And as we go through the comments, I will reserve the right, at least on the first round, as a chair, to go last, at least in the first round. So I see Councilmember Rallo, and then Councilmember Scambalory. I hope I didn't get those backwards.
Thank you. My connection is not good, but I simply wanted to state that I'm deeply troubled by the lack of substantive recognition of the deteriorating situation in the police department. The majority of council, as Councilmember Sandberg said, made it abundantly clear that retention and recruitment has to be addressed, not by one-off bonuses, but by an increase in base pay, so that we are competitive with other cities. And this can be done without increasing the budget, just transfers between what is unneeded at this time and what is needed. It's a matter of priorities. So I'm just astounded that this hasn't been done, and I can't support the budget at this time without that provision for public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes, thank you. I have a question. Would that be okay, or are we exclusively in comments?
No, question's fine.
Okay. This may be directed to Mayor Hamilton or to Controller Underwood, so if you'd like to pop back in. Mayor Hamilton, in the memo you released yesterday, the very first point you offered was that 10.1 million and proposed, if this budget is adopted, 10.1 million in proposed new ARPA expenditures, including major funding for affordable housing, jobs, and training, and so forth, will be implemented. All right. Perhaps it was unintentional, but is, does that suggest that this is our only opportunity to appropriate those ARPA dollars? Will we have, would we have another opportunity to appropriate them? Or does this, are you suggesting that this is our one opportunity, and if we don't pass the budget, we lose those ARPA dollars?
No, council member, I think you know we don't lose those dollars. I think the only thing I'd say is, the budget was built really in an integrated way with the ARPA appropriation to help 2022 be an integrated and effective approach. If there is no 2022 budget, then we have the 2021 budget instead, and it kind of throws everything up. But yes, the council can, and I hope will, continue to appropriate ARPA money down the road.
Good, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambalory. Would you like to continue in final comments?
I can wait for another round to finish up with comments.
Well, we're in first round, so I'll come back to you before we end the first round. Do we have any other comments from council members? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thank you. I was trying to gather some of my thoughts there. First, just a thank you and appreciation again to all members of the administration for their work on the budget. I know it's a lot of work. I know a lot has gone into it, and I appreciate the conversations we've had. But I voted no during our committee, the whole meeting two weeks ago, on this ordinance explaining that I could not support the civil city budget as proposed, and that view has not changed. In particular, I described several changes I would need to see to get to a budget that I could support, and those were based on what I see as fundamental and critical ways in which we are falling short, specifically with regard to the climate crisis and the city's adopted plans and goals. I feel I've communicated all of this very clearly over the course of the past few weeks and months in meetings and communications with the mayor. In meetings and communications with the mayor, I've also tried to be creative and flexible on how we could work together to meet. What I see as key priorities. And that had been narrowed from a much fuller set of priorities. I believe these were very reasonable, quite limited, and rooted very clearly in the legislatively adopted plans and goals of the city. And I don't feel that our disagreement is a mere difference of opinion. With regard to how to meet a particular priority, I do worry that the priority isn't fully shared. One example specifically, it seems quite plain, based on council meetings and council member questions that the administration has answered. That we are not in a position to implement the Climate Action Plan the city has developed and this council has approved. And this just simply isn't acceptable to me. The climate crisis is a central and defining challenge of our time. Including for the city and for people everywhere. It is a significant justice and equity issue. And I see it as central to my job and my role as an elected official to address this crisis. And specifically to hold the city accountable to the plans that we adopt and approve. There were several other shortcomings in the budget that I also see as critical, also all related to our adopted city plans. So to me, this speaks to the responsibility of this council as the fiscal body of the city. Indeed, what I see is our job to hold the city accountable to the commitments we have made via adopted legislation and city plans. The mayor, of course, has no obligation to meet the priorities that members of the city council. Share, no matter how critical we may see them. But in my view, the entire point of a governmental system with checks and balances is to have real collaboration, not just dialogue, but meaningful give and take and compromise. Additionally, I think avoiding the much diminished future that Mayor Hamilton invoked in his statement at the beginning of this meeting. At the prospect of a failed budget is, in my view, very much his shared responsibility. A number of council members have set narrow, limited, and reasonable priorities that they have been quite clear they need to see in the budget to support it. It was the mayor's choice not to have included these. He suggested that there are, if there are forty nine good things in a budget, and there's not a fiftieth good thing that we. Would also like to see that a no vote isn't really an appropriate response. But I think that metaphor goes both ways. If the mayor has forty nine things in his budget. That he likes, but the council feels absolutely like that a fiftieth is absolutely essential. I don't think it's reasonable for him not to add that one extra item. So I think the same reasoning can apply to either. And I don't think it's it's. Legitimate to pin this on the council like like we are not acting reasonably. So that's really it. I don't think the council has acted unreasonably or is overstepping our limits and our responsibility and our role. In setting priorities and fiscal oversight for the city. And again, there have been no changes since two weeks ago when I expressed my view that it was a budget I could not support. And as a result, I intend to vote no tonight and still cannot support the civil city budget as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other? Final comments from council first round comments? Council. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes. The mayor has made a stark. Choice. He, I mean, he has outlined this as a stark choice between either we accept. The budget as he has proposed. Or we are stuck with the twenty twenty one budget for a second year. But there is a third path. And that is that the mayor can revise those Form Ones, the. The forms that indicate how the general fund money is going to be distributed between departments and between expense codes. And bring it back to us. And that is an avenue that the mayor has just not even considered. And I think that is. A shame. I I do feel strongly that. The city council. Has just as much. Responsibility for the budget as the mayor. And therefore also should have as much input. And it is has been made clear to this administration. That there are some very strong sticking points. For a majority of council members. We took the unprecedented step a few weeks ago of passing a resolution with seven to two. To say that we would like to see an increase in the base pay of police officers. Seven to two. That included two out of three, three at large council members who are elected by the same constituency as the mayor. And this was disregarded. This was not incorporated into the budget. And I see that as highly problematic. In addition, myself and three colleagues have. Been discussing with the mayor. Since July first, several of our priorities that focus on climate action. Following our stated. City plans that were arrived at through extensive public input processes. And. We we very much appreciate some of the things that Mayor Hamilton has. Accommodated in the budget from our list. But there are still two major sticking points. One of which was also a sticking point last year and has been under discussion for many years previous to that. And that is creating a director of climate action. Not only because we need more staff hours to implement our climate action plan, but also we need them at a level. That can talk directly to department heads and. Make sure that all decisions made by department heads at all layers of government, all departments of government. Take climate as a chief concern and a chief guiding factor of mitigating. And preparing for climate change. So that has been clear to Mayor Hamilton since last year, at least. And it is not just as he. As he stated, a difference of opinion, but it is. I believe it is a fundamental necessity to achieving both our stated city goals. And doing all we can for the existential crisis that we are in with the climate. So I ask the administration to revise those Form Ones. And make the changes that a majority of council members have asked for. There is support beyond the four of us for the climate action position. And bring it back to us in a few weeks, and then we would have time to approve that prior to the state deadline. So I cannot vote for this budget the way it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I'm having a hard time with this budget as well. We we talked about for several months, the importance of raising the base salaries for. The BPD. And I think it's just a matter of. I want to quote Thomas Paine about common sense. There's been. An issue that has been happening for a while in the police department. The attrition, the people leaving and and not being retained. And some of these factors are societal at this point. But. It doesn't appear that. After our kind of research and analysis of the situation. About retention and that that. The. Salary, base salary seems to be the biggest sticking point. To try to stem the tide and reduce the turnover and increase the retention. So I have a real hard time with. The statements that we've changed the, we've changed the budget. Well, the budget's been changed, but. It didn't really. It's not, it's a one off. It's it's. One thousand dollars for five. Quarters. So it's really, it's really not the five thousand dollar increase in in base. That appears that. That's the response that. Most people are opining that is needed. So, you know, I'm really struggling with this. And I and I do understand all the different implications. So. Thank you. I just wanted to. You know, give my thoughts on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Any other first round final comments from council members? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. As usual, my thoughts are kind of scattered on my piece of paper here. First, I wanted just to make a comment on Mr. Alexander's comments that it looks like we're at a procedural impasse. And I think. Councilmember Piedmont Smith made a very good point that. We still, the city council still has time to work with the mayor to create a budget that. We all find, you know, pursues our city's priorities and agreed upon goals. So. I don't consider this an impact point. I consider it, you know, we're in kind of the final stages of tweaking a pretty good budget. But a lot of us here, just based on these comments so far, seem to need just a little bit. More, a little bit changed before before we're ready to vote yes. You know, what comes up for me a lot is the question, how will we meet our climate and equity goals that have been agreed on in the comprehensive. And in the transportation plan and the climate action plan. I don't think this budget gets there, and that is why. As is, I plan to vote no on this. I, this has been mentioned already, but I think it is really important. For us to create a position for a director. Some sort of director of climate action. I think. We're not really tracking the climate action plan. It's an incredibly large document. It has. You know, dozens of goals and priorities, and we we need someone. To be on the lookout for us and and help work through that. I would say I feel very strongly. That there are some things missing in this budget. I would also say I feel strongly that other things are missing, but. I understand this is a budget that ten people have to agree on. And so I am, I think, and have been willing to compromise and give. Things up and like the understanding of where other people are coming from here, about what other people want to see in this budget. There are just some sticking points for me in this that have been communicated to the administration. Times. One is that director of climate action. I think this has sort of been touched on, and I mean, I just said this, but it is up to ten of us, right? There's nine council members and there's one mayor. I think putting some sort of. Responsibility on one group. To pass it over another isn't fair. And I think we're all here to do our best and to compromise. I would say, well, a lot of us. Seem to not be ready to pass this budget. I think everyone here wants to pass the twenty twenty two budget. So I think if we go with that positive outlook and make some small tweaks here. We can really get there. Taking a little step back on twenty twenty two. I actually still think this resembles the twenty twenty one budget process where twenty twenty one. I didn't feel as, I don't think I was listened to as much I was as I was listened to this year. But. I think in both case, in both cases. I have felt listened to, but no action has happened from those conversations. There, there, there have been some things that there's been collaboration and flexibility. And so I am happy about that, such as the parking cash out program for city employees. I am excited to be starting that and piloting that at the city. But I think a budget that needs to be designed and passed by ten people needs a lot more than just listening. It really needs collaboration. And the fact that this hasn't changed since it was presented to me means. There's not enough collaboration happening. So my goal here is to do my part to produce the best budget for the city. And I think this is really close. But for now, I don't, I don't support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I think what we're hearing from most council members. Is that there are some existential in in the case of climate action. And there are some crises with respect to basic city services. And I think one of the biggest problems with this budget as proposed is are just a little bit of something for everybody. And I think that is where we need to sit down at the table. And think about how to prioritize the things that are rising to the top. As being either existential crisis. Or a crisis with the Bloomington Police Department. That there are things we can let go. There are things we can wait. For next year's budget or the year after that, in order to build on some of the nice things. That we've been able to do that I would consider amenities. But when it comes to your basic city services for police, for fire, for infrastructure, for sanitation. For all the things that people rely on the city to do, there's plenty of room in this budget for us to sit down. Prioritize what can we remove? We don't have to make this budget more top heavy or more expensive than it is. We can just through process of elimination. Take a look at some things that can wait while we deal with the emerging crises of our times. The phrase is often used both and. Well, we can have it all. Both and. And in this case, I think we have too many things that are rising to the the top of the, we've got to take care of this. We've got to be competitive with our wages. We've got to compete with other agencies across the state. Or we are not going to be able to repair the damage. And so where I'm coming from is a back to basics campaign. And we have plenty of room to sit down at the table, talk about what can go and what needs to rise to the number one priority. So again, this budget is not cut and dried for me. I really resent having it presented to me as you either do this or bad stuff's gonna happen. Because we all have minds of our own. We represent constituents who we hear from on a regular basis. And we feel there's a lot more work we can do in this budget between now and the time it has to pass. If we have the political will to do it. I beg of you to sit down, talk with this council in a meaningful way, and let's make some changes so we can all vote for a budget that we can feel good about. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg. I do believe. Let's see, Councilmember Boland's hand. Councilmember Boland.
Thank you. Adjusting my screen here. Council cannot increase any lines in the budget by statute. Only the mayor can choose to increase a line item. In a budget as proposed. The council cannot even do so if it is cutting an equivalent amount in another line in order to transfer money from one budget to another without increasing the overall fund amount. And that's because this is a strong mayor state. By definition, the mayor makes the budget. The council has to approve it, but they cannot increase any part of it. Councilmember Flaherty noted the mayor's invocation of, you know, whether if we do forty nine good things, but voting the budget down in order to, you know, over the fiftieth thing. He rightly pointed out that it's not up to him to assume that each thing in question. Not up to the mayor to assume that each thing in question is of equal value. I think it's ironic that he chose that number trying to minimize the concerns of the majority of members, and I'll explain why in a minute. Several of my colleagues have noted that the mayor's response to a base pay increase for police was insufficient. Several have noted the mayor's unwillingness to take the climate crisis seriously enough to appoint a cabinet level director. Here is the new. Climate Action Plan commissioned by this administration. I just picked it up today in the council office, one hundred and fifty pages long. On page two. It notes that by twenty fifty. The city is going to be experiencing dramatic changes in climate. One of the facets it asks, it notes that we're going to have days above ninety five degrees. Recently, how many ninety five degree days were there in Bloomington? According to the historical weather data at timeanddate.com, there have been none this year. We reached a peak of ninety three degrees over the summer. Last year, there were two days. On July fifth, it reached ninety five degrees here. And apparently, on September nineteenth, it reached one hundred and forty degrees. I think. That that's a mistake. Pretty sure that that there was really only one day. that that's a mistake. Pretty sure that, that there was really only one day last year that was 95 degrees. According to our newly printed climate action plan, by 2050, there are going to be 49 days a year above 95 degrees. It's going to come as a surprise to no one that one of this mayor's budgets might not actually pass this year. We're seeing open revolt by a majority of council. In my experience and to my knowledge, there has never been a vote to reject the mayor's proposed budget. If it happens tonight, it'll be a precedent of local historic proportions. And it is entirely solely within the mayor's control to prevent this outcome. Councilmembers have said the must haves that, that they need. Only the mayor can make them happen. I'm going to be very curious to see what happens tonight. But I will not be surprised if the budget is rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boland. Councilmember Scambler, did you have?
Sure. I'm round two though. Is that okay?
Oh, we're still round one on the comments.
I used my round one, so.
Oh, thank you. Ask a question if you care to make a comment.
No, happy to offer comments now. I want to respond to some of what I've heard this evening. And, and you've heard this theme across from, from several of my colleagues. Council only has three choices. Adopt a budget that is sitting in front of us or reduce it and then adopt it. Or just repeat the 2021 budget with all the negative consequences that imply. I, I do appreciate what the mayor has done to have, hold scores of meetings and conversations about the budget. But what we need to acknowledge here is that the mayor himself makes literally hundreds of decisions as a budget comes together. Okay. It's been, it's been perhaps not overtly stated, but certainly implied, particularly by yesterday's memo, that it is entirely up to council at this point, whether or not we have a new budget. That's only true if the mayor has no intention of participating in any further conversations. That's only true if the mayor has no intention of permitting, of participating in any further conversations. I've received questions from others saying if there are budget items with which you disagree, then why not just vote no on the entire budget? And go back to the drawing board. And I think that's a valid question. There are elements of this budget I don't like, but as a council member, I don't believe that alone gives me sufficient reason to vote down an entire budget at this point. Budgeting is not about the ideal. It's about navigating and negotiating trade-offs. It's about finding the optimal balance of priorities. And I don't think we've done that quite yet. I believe we have room for some additional work. And I believe we have time for it. Is it close? Yep. And don't be assured, I feel that urgency. But I don't think we're done yet. More specifically, as currently written, general fund monies, sustainable base funds are indicated for use in creating several new salary lines for non-sworn officers for BPD. Many of us have spoken on multiple occasions about the support we have for non-sworn officers, and we've applauded the work done by our social workers. In that same budget, ARPA funds, short-term money that will evaporate at the end of next year, will be used to increase compensation for sworn officers through bonuses, and then it will disappear. Council has made it clear in recent weeks that the greatest source of concern right now, somewhat so far as to call it a crisis, is the recruitment and retention of sworn officers. As anyone who has ever drawn a salary anywhere should be able to tell you, there is a qualitative difference between a one-time bonus dollars and an ongoing investment that actually conveys the value we place and that actually responds to the problems that most urgently need our attention right now. Again, I don't believe we've done that quite yet. I think we have some room for additional work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambler. What I'd like to say is since the budget proposal was presented in August, there has been some changes from the administration and those, I just wish to thank the mayor. I am thankful, I'm just not quite sure that it's enough in getting to the core of what some of the issues is with my colleagues. I was one of the seven who voted affirmatively for the resolution to address BPD's base salaries. In my individual conversations with my colleagues, as well as the mayor, it is clear that there is a desire to pass the 2022 budget as proposed, or I'm sorry, pass the 2022 budget. Also in individual discussions, I think my colleagues are clear on what the results of passing the budget as well as rejecting the budget, what those two decisions mean. I, my job as council president is hey, to facilitate these meetings, to give every opportunity and allow my colleagues the authority and the room to make their comments and their presentations and their items of discussion to be part of our council process, council meeting process. And that is my goal and what we've attempted to do, and I do believe we've achieved it. Having said that, I think the public and my fellow colleagues have heard from several of council members this evening who are still willing to vote no on this budget. That tells me there's still work to do. It's not a, a perfect budget. But I think there's still more work that needs to be done or possibly discussed as we move forward. So Councilmember Sandberg.
Mr. President, I move that the council recess tonight's special session and recommend that we reconvene at 6:30 on September 27th for a continued special session.
Second.
Thank you. My colleagues have heard the motion has been properly seconded.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I, did Councilmember Sandberg mean October 27th?
I did. My bad. September 27th.
No.
October.
October.
Thank you.
October. I wrote it down.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
This month.
Again, the requisites of this motion that it requires a second, which it has, it is not debatable. It is amendable, and it takes a simple majority to pass. It has been properly moved in second. So will the clerk please call the roll on this motion?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
No.
Rosenberg?
Yeah.
Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes eight to one. We will reconvene on October 27th in special session at 6:30 PM to continue this current special session. And before we adjourn this evening, Mr. Lucas, is it now proper to discuss matters of council schedule?
Yes, I'll, I'll just display, if that's all right, the Zoom information for that October 27th meeting. This will also be available on the council's website for the folks that would like to attend that meeting. We'll display that just briefly. Are folks able to see that? Yes, okay. As, as noted at the bottom, this, this link and all of the relevant information will be available on the council's website shortly. And for folks that would like to attend, the link is displayed here on the screen. And again, we will post this to, to the council website and provide additional notice that way. Give folks just a second longer. I don't have any additional items for council to consider under, under this agenda item. I'll just note that next week is a scheduled regular session with two reports on the agenda along with one ordinance for second reading. So we will see everyone next week.
Okay, and thank you. And before we call it evening, I do want to clarify, and we may not have mentioned this with Councilmember Sandberg's motion, that motion passed eight zero one. I'm sorry, eight, one, zero. And if there are no objections, I am adjourning today's special session.
Just a point of order and clarification. We've actually been in recess since that motion passed. We are not currently in session. No need to adjourn. We're simply reassessed. The additional information provided by Mr. Lucas came outside the context of our meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Involuntary and Flaherty. Appreciate it. And I guess we'll just leave. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.